Good evening and welcome. Good evening and welcome to the April 25th regular meeting of the Rockham County School Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and before we proceed to approval of our agenda, I would like to outline a new procedural item that the board will be adhering to. In conversations with legal counsel regarding some pending cases before the courts in Virginia right now about notification of agenda items. From tonight forward, if any one of the board members here would like to add an item of action, we will request that it be done as we approve the agenda. The board will then, depending upon the topic, there will be three options. One will be to place it on tonight's agenda. If it doesn't garner a second or majority vote, it would not be added to an agenda. Or the third option might be that the board would consider the option to be the item important enough that we would wait until the next meeting to address it so that there would be adequate time to notify the public that we would be discussing and voting on this particular topic. There will still be the same opportunity at the conclusion of our meeting for school board members to ask questions. It's just that any action items will have to come through the approval of the agenda process and then add it to action items should they be approved. Does everyone understand what I'm saying there? With that having been said, the first item of business is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is a five-o unanimous vote. Thank you. I would ask at this point that everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask that everyone please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we will move to recognition and presentations. School recognitions for the Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Account Students of the Month and Volunteer of the Month.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome our school board members and our superintendent, Dr. Seichel, to East Rock this evening, along with our central office personnel, personnel, and our guests in the audience. We'll begin tonight with our Volunteer of the Year and our Character Counts Award winners. I'll call you up as you come up. I'll go ahead and read the summary that we have here for you. So Ms. Molly Walkup-Goschweiler, our Volunteer of the Year, if you could come forward. She's been selected as the East Rockingham High School Volunteer of the Year for the school year. She has been such a help throughout the year with reviving our music boosters after the COVID setbacks, spending time at the football games, frying Oreos, organizing and updating paperwork, leading meetings, and always looking to assist wherever needed. ERHS is thankful for her leadership while thinking up new and creative ways to fundraise for our music students. She was tremendously supportive of the cast, crew, and directors of our musical production, which was The Addams Family. She uses at every concert and finds so many ways to extend herself to others and always does it with a great attitude, flair, and finesse. Molly's generous spirit is a fantastic model and has been noticed by many. Thank you for the many ways you have served us all this year. East Rockingham High School is proud to announce Molly Walkup-Goschweiler as our year's Volunteer of the Year.
Mr. Swagert, if I may, I would ask that you would present to Molly this certificate of commendation on behalf of the board and this gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar that I hope she can enjoy. I often say that we all are typically known by what we do for pay as a living. We're a teacher, we're an auto mechanic, we're a welder, we're a nurse, a police officer, whatever. But sometimes what is more important is what are we known for when we're not getting paid? And these people that volunteer their time, it says so much about their character and the people that they are because they don't do it to get these awards. But it's an opportunity for us to say thank you, and I hope that you will communicate our tremendous thanks to her on our behalf.
Next up is our first Character Counts Award. Patrick Stapleton, if you and your family can come forward. Is Patrick here? There we go. Students take many different paths to become memorable at ERHS. Patrick's path is characterized by trustworthiness, honesty, stick-to-it-ness, and a mature ability to communicate with others. He can always be counted on to volunteer his time demonstrating an urge to give back. He constantly, consistently exudes empathy towards his peers and simply strives to do what is right. Patrick is respected by everyone at ERHS, adults and students alike. Mr. Miller, our counselor writes, "In a day and age where communication is almost always email, texting, messaging, et cetera, Patrick excels in face-to-face communication. This is why I think he is so accepted by his peers and teachers for leadership roles." East Rockingham High School is proud to announce Patrick Stapleton as one of this year's Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award winners.
I hope you all can here be okay. Before I present these to Patrick, would you make sure this student had you with us? Well, that's good. We thank you first and foremost, you guys, Eric and you too. And we appreciate that you are doing this fine and presenting Eric to us. Patrick, I have here a certificate of commendation on behalf of the Rockham County School Board for your tremendous work in demonstrating the character. More so than anything else, that character will carry you a long way regardless of what profession, what you're doing. My father always told me that as a young man, your reputation follows you, as an older man goes there. And so maintaining that reputation and good character will carry you a long way. This time, I present you a certificate as well as a Character Counts pen and a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar to share with mom if you'd like. Congratulations. Thank you so very much.
Olivia Simkins, if you can come down with your family? Webster's definition of character is moral excellence, and Olivia exemplifies this. She is known by almost everyone at ERHS. Her teachers and peers describe her as warm, self-sacrificing, friendly, and eager to lend a helping hand. She is full of school spirit and comes to school with a positive attitude every day. Her thoughtfulness and kindness is evident through her everyday interactions with classmates and teachers. Ms. Roberts, Olivia's former psychology teacher, was especially impressed with her during the pandemic. Ms. Roberts writes, "Olivia is one of only a few students willing to show herself on her Zoom screen during COVID." Why? Because she knew it would make her teacher more comfortable. Simply put, Olivia Simkins is a billboard to what is right with youth today. East Rockingham High School is excited to announce Olivia Simkins as one of this year's Brittany Lamb Coggsdale, Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award winners.
Olivia, all of the things that I said to Patrick certainly apply to you as well, but I was standing here thinking, watching the two of you meet going down the aisle way there that, and I guess it's been said forever regardless of the generation, but sometimes people will tell me, boy, we're in trouble when this next generation takes over. And I just wish that they could be here to see people presented like these two tonight because I, as I approach my, I don't know where they got the idea of golden years because I'm not so sure that they're golden. But anyway, as I approach senior citizenhood, I feel confident of where we're going because of people like you and Patrick. And I have every confidence that our future is in good hands. So I would like to present to you a certificate of commendation as well as a pen and a Klein's Dairy Bar certificate as well and say congratulations. Keep it up. Thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for sharing with us.
At this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Janine Doffmeyer and Ms. Bethany Stabler to come up and introduce the ERHS Care Closet.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Seichel. Welcome to our beautiful school. Glad you're here. A lunchtime conversation between a few East Rock teachers was the inspiration for our Care Closet. The focus of this lunchtime discussion was a particular student's academic struggles. It soon turned into so much more. One of us had noticed that the student didn't have an appropriate jacket for the weather. Another had noticed that his shoes were worn. Yes, this student needed our support in the classroom, but more importantly, he needed our support with some basic physiological needs. Balancing academics with everything else is not a new task for teachers. It's a challenge we've always faced. So shortly after this meeting, the wheels began to turn and the East Rock Care Closet was born. With the support of our community, the Care Closet has received over $8,000 in donations by check, along with tangible donations of clothing and personal hygiene items. After Bethany tells you about some of the students we have helped, a short video created by students here at East Rock will give you a look inside of our Care Closet. And we hope that you'll actually be able to see it in person later this evening. It's on the way to the library. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can't miss it. I turned the lights on and opened the door. There's a nice sign there, too. Working in special education and alternative education has given myself, Mrs. Doffmeyer, and Mr. Mark Palmer a unique opportunity to help a population of our students who may be overlooked. Students often email us, come to our rooms, and ask if they can be taken to our Care Closet. My interactions with students in the Care Closet has always been very positive. However, it hasn't only been with students. All three of us have taken families into the Care Closet to shop. Those of us who have had to ask for help know what a humbling experience it can be. Personally, I believe that those struggles are what gives us the desire to help others. Parents come into the closet to choose basic clothing items for their children and see that we have household basics that so many of us take for granted, like laundry detergent, shampoo. And thanks to a student who asked about this item when her dad was out of work unexpectedly, we now have toilet paper. I have the privilege, I've had the privilege of being a personal shopper for several students who have been nervous about visiting the closet for the first time, trying always to include in our bags new socks, shampoo, a washcloth, deodorant, and a few snacks when we have them. While we try to have a variety of sizes available of clothing and shoes, sometimes we don't have what the student needs and are able to order it with those funds that have come in through donations. It has been, we've been able to order shoes for specific students who need a size that we don't have, as well as different items of clothing. The overwhelming feeling of people that they have when they leave our East Rockingham Care Closet is every school needs a Care Closet. I've found that it really goes beyond being able to provide a pair of shoes, shampoo, sweatpants, or a coat to someone in need. We have been able, with the help of our community, to provide dignity to these 150-plus students and their families while they receive a helping hand. Thank you all so much for your time.
Works better with the button on. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Seichel. I am so excited to present you guys with our JMU Regional Science Fair winner. He was the grand prize winner. And in my 22 years in Rockingham County, I've only seen one other grand prize winner from Rockingham County move on. So it's very exciting to see him win the JMU Regional Science Fair. The award is named in order in honor of Doreen and Tom DeVore, who are, were 30-year patrons of the Regional Science Fair. To give you a little bit of information about this, he is now going to be eligible to present at the International Science and Engineering Fest- Fair, which of the 5 million students worldwide who compete in science fairs, only 1,500 of students will be able to compete at this, and he is one of those 1,500 students who are eligible. At the fair, he also won awards for his research from the United States Navy and the Special Physics and Engineering Award. And so he's going to present to you on his topic of understanding the variability of optical spectra of water mega-masers. And I've told him to, I think he's going to make it so that we'll all understand. So we have Will St. John. Congratulations, Will.
Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, I will be able to make this at least somewhat understandable. Basically, this whole slide, it's a lot of big words, but the main point is we're thinking about, we're studying light coming from galaxies. What type of light? Mazers is what they're called, which is an acronym, if you've ever seen a laser pointer, which I assume most of you have. It's like a laser, except in the microwave frequency, which is a little bit less energetic, so not as powerful as a laser. These are actually, these are more luminous, so you're going to be able, you're not going to be able to see it with your eye because it's in a different portion of the electromagnetic spectrum, but you can detect it with telescopes, which is really neat. The cool thing about these is they're formed with two different, through two different processes. First one is star formation. So like our sun, whenever it's formed, it's shooting out light, shooting out radiation from throughout the entire spectrum, but a certain portion of it could be some of these masers, and we can detect that coming from galaxies. Another one that's even cooler is from a supermassive black hole. So a little fact about, in the field of astronomy, is that it's assumed with ample evidence that every single galaxy has a supermassive black hole at its center, and some of them can be turned on and some of them can be turned off. The way, by that, what I mean is some of them can be called what's called an active galactic nuclei, which basically means that it's got a supermassive black hole at the center, an accretion disk around that, which is just matter, just gas particles. And as that gas, as those gas particles swirl into this black hole, they're colliding with each other, and they eventually heat up. All these collisions cause it to heat up, and this heat is just light, and this heat releases light, and it'll travel, if you can see, this is a basic diagram of it. This is the supermassive black hole right here, and what will happen is it'll, the matter will swirl into the black hole. As it swirls into that black hole, it heats up, light is emitted, and it travels through these molecules of gas that are surrounding it. And we're able to detect these emissions coming from them and detect what type of elements are there. And the cool thing is we can determine what type of elements are present in these environments in this, at the centers of galaxies. And what we can do with that is we can actually create what's called line diagnostic diagrams, which I'll show you on the next slide, this slide, actually. When you create, you can create what's called line diagnostic diagrams, which are basically ratios of these elements. And then those ratios are then ratioed themselves. So it looks like a bunch of fancy scientific terminology, but this is just, think of it as a ratio of one element of hydrogen to nitrogen, and that is being compared to a ratio of hydrogen and oxygen. So it's actually very simple if you take the time to look into it, but the cool thing about this is we're actually able to determine what's called the dominant ionization mechanism, which is just a fancy way of saying what's going on at the centers of these galaxies? What is the primary method of which these emissions are being created? Is it star formation or is it a supermassive black hole? And so what we were able to do with this research project, this is the actual data that we were able to collect from the Green Bank Telescope, which is in West Virginia, I think, and the Sloan Digital Sky Survey, which is a database of a bunch of observational data. The top one is what's called, are the mazer emissions from galaxies? One thing you'll, if you can see, it's kind of hard to tell from far away, but there's about two points right here, two points right here, a few points, a few points, a few points, a few points. And there's a bunch of different lines and different boundaries being created in this. Everything that is below this blue boundary, and this blue boundary and this blue boundary is in a star forming region, so if you see a dot in there, that's a galaxy where the primary or the dominant ionization mechanism is star formation. So the main cause of the emissions are stars being formed. Anything above that is an AGN or an active galactic nuclei. So that's the supermassive black hole that's active, that's constantly eating matter. So that's kind of, that's the cool thing that you want to look at. But unfortunately, the masers, we're not seeing, we don't have a lot of data because this is actually some fairly recent, this is a fairly like new field that we were working with, and I was working with a professor at JMU, Dr. Anka Konstantin. But we also looked into non-masers, which are just regular galaxies or galaxies that don't have these mazer emissions. And what you'll notice is it's a lot more active down here. It looks a lot more interesting, a lot more colorful, and there's a lot more lines that are crossing over these boundaries, especially this one right here. If you can kind of tell, it's really, again, it's hard to see from far away, but there's a purple line going from underneath this blue curve to in between this blue curve and this yellow curve. So what that actually is looking at is a galaxy that was previously, when it was first observed, it was a star formation as the dominant way for these emissions being created. But then it changed, and the black hole turned back on, and it started eating all this matter, which we don't know why, we could look into that, but it started eating this matter, and now that's the primary way we're seeing these emissions. So that's something that we weren't expecting to see. We were trying to look into masers, but we found out something new with the research project and something that we could definitely look for or look into more. And that is it. Thank you.
Will, as I was sitting here listening to you, I was thinking about President Kennedy once hosted a group of world leaders in the East Room, and he began his remarks by saying, "Never have so many great minds gathered together in this room since Thomas Jefferson dined alone." And I'm just sitting here thinking, never have so many great minds been at a school board meeting until Will St. John just talked himself. So wow, way to go. So, wow, way to go. Um, before we move to public comments, I'd just like to take a moment again to recognize because we have truly, truly seen tonight one of the many things that are so great about Rockingham County Public Schools. We've seen people of character, we've seen, um, people who are scientific winners, we've seen people who simply care about their neighbors. And if you turn and look at the person next to you, but by the grace of God, go I. And I'm so thankful that there are people like you that are there to help, particularly during these, um, tender and formative years. So if you don't mind, indulge me and just give these folks another round of applause. Feel like we should just adjourn right now, 'cause there's nothing we can do to top that. But we will begin, we will move into our comments from the public. As always, um, there'll be a three-minute time limit, and we ask that everyone in the audience be respectful of the speaker, irregardless of what their position might be. It's another great thing about this country of ours. So, um, we will begin with Ashley Saunders. Ms. Saunders.
Hi, um, I wanna thank the board for being willing to listen to public comment. And, um, my name is Ashley Saunders and I have two children at the, um, Broadway School System. I have a junior and I have a second grader. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of the teachers of Rockingham County Public Schools who have had years that felt like they have lasted lifetimes, who have carried themselves with dignity and grace, who have seen their students and their needs and say, "We will rise and we will respect your humanity and your autonomy as a person." Because children are autonomous human beings who deserve respect and dignity. We, as a community, deserve to treat each other with respect and dignity even when we do not agree. We need to trust the professionals of our school systems who have master's degrees and have given their lives passions to educating children. Parental choice is choosing where you send your children to school. And if you choose public school, you have said, "I trust this school to teach my children and to keep them safe and to respect them." All children. White children, brown children, queer children, trans children, all deserve respect and dignity. We also need to trust our school librarians for taking what they have learned, their extended education, and curating books for children to understand the world around them because we do it through literature. I grew up in a very small town in Illinois. I learned about the world around me through books. I also learned that pirates are super awesome. My favorite book is Treasure Island. And I want to say, as a parent, if you do not want your child reading a book, feel free to tell the school that you do not want your child reading this particular book, and they will respect that. But you do not get to choose what my children read and the conversations at my dinner table and who the voices my children listen to are. That is my choice. So I'm encouraging everyone to have nice, loving, and respectful conversations with one another and our children around the dinner table. And remember that they are autonomous human beings, fully emotionally fledged. And before I leave, I want to say, I love the students of Rockingham County Public Schools. I especially love the queer and trans students of Rockingham County Public Schools. And I'm continuing to fight for you to be seen, heard, because trans rights are human rights and every child deserves a safe and healthy education in the public school system. Thank you.
Michael Stempel.
Thank you, Mike Stempel from Broadway, Virginia. Um, I'd like to thank the board for giving this opportunity to speak again. In the last school board meeting, the book, "The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian," was discussed by the school board. During that time, it was mentioned that the book contained CRT material. CRT, or Critical Race Theory, is a legal theory that analyzes the le- how the legal system and institutions interact with the social construct of race. The hysteria around Critical Race Theory was created in part by Chris Ruffo of the Manhattan Institute. In March 2021, tweet, he states, "The goal is to have the public read something crazy in the newspaper and immediately think Critical Race Theory." It looks like that's exactly what happened here when an analysis of the aforementioned book was given by a board member earlier this month. Let's look at the specific claims about the so-called CRT material. It was mentioned that the phrase "white power structure" was included in the discussion section of the book. The, that phrase has been in use for decades before Critical Race Theory was developed in the early 1990s. You can do a search for the phrase "white power structure" in the online archives of the Daily News Record, which is what I did, and find multiple ar- articles in the 1960s that used that very phrase. For example, a sub-headline for the June 10th, 1966 issue of the DNR read "White Power Structure." In the January 27th, 1967 issue, an article talking about Virginia's resistance to the Voting Rights Act, the phrase "the white power structure" is used. Back to the book. Another example of CRT material, according to the school board member, was a partial quote from page 35 of the book. I'm gonna quote a few sentences before that, along with a selection that was quoted in the board meeting. In this section, Mr. P., junior's teacher, is talking to the main character, junior. "When I first started teaching here, that's what we did to the rowdy ones, you know? We beat them. That's how we were taught to teach you. We were supposed to kill the Indian and save the child." Junior responds, "You killed Indians?" Mr. P. responds, "No, no, no. It's just a saying. I don't, I didn't literally kill Indians. We were supposed to make you give up being Indian. Your songs and stories and language and dancing, everything. We weren't trying to kill Indian people. We were trying to kill Indian culture." So, for historical context, the phrase "kill the Indian, save the man" was coined by Richard Henry Pratt, one of the leaders in the effort of forced assimilation of indigenous people to white culture here in the United States. Pratt was responsible for starting what was called the Carlisle Indian School, just up the road in Carlisle, uh, Pennsylvania, in 1979. It operated for 39 years and 186 children died during his time. Can you even imagine the school board meetings that we would have if one child died, uh, you know, during that, during, uh, a year? Let's re- may, and then, uh, address the racial slur made in the book. In this section, immediately after the racial slur-
Mr. Stempel.
-the main character calls it, calls the phrase, can I?
Time.
Okay, may I finish my statement or no?
Uh, if, if you would like to present it to us in writing-
Okay, that's fine.
-we'd be happy to take it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, we will move to school board member comments, and I will begin with Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. One thing that, uh, we can do now that we couldn't do during the pandemic is visit our schools and see what's going on, get a measure of the, the, the climate and, and the students and everything. And, um, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, where Dr. Scheikle presented the budget to the Board of Supervisors, I asked two of the members of the Board of Supervisors to join me for lunch at, uh, Mass Nutt and Technical Center. And we would take a tour of the building and see what some of the challenges are for the infrastructure there, which is, um, I think they're 50 years old this year, perhaps, with the original heating system and cooling system and all that. And two of them, uh, Mr. Ritchie and, uh, Ms. Wolf Garrison, agreed to meet there. And we were joined by another school board member, Ms. Lauer, and by the superintendent. And we had a great, great time, followed by a great lunch at the MTC Bistro. And, uh, it's just good to be able to get back in and, and see what's going on and see the wonderful program at MTC and also see some of the, uh, some of the infrastructure challenges that we face and that we have to address. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cross.
I'm, I wanna say that Mr., um, um, Will St. John, great presentation tonight, man. Really great. I was thinking of President Trump, and I was thinking about Space Force, and I hope that you can, uh, work for Space Force one day and protect the United States, uh, from foreign, from all kinds of stuff. But you are very intelligent, and I, I thank you for coming tonight. And I saw my son on the front row, uh, just paying attention to everything you were saying, 'cause he loves, uh, everything to do with space, and my wife does as well. She would've loved to hear, heard you tonight. Maybe she'll get back and listen to it. But, uh, thank you for the public coming out tonight. Uh, thank you again for parents that are here and that you're involved in the, uh, your child's, um, school uh, and your, and the decisions that are being made. Thank you for coming tonight as community members, and, um, thank you for all that you do. It's important that we recognize you and that you are welcome, no matter what side of the aisle or whatever, uh, stance you may have on different issues. We need, uh, the public to come and to take part in, um, these, um, school board meetings. So thank you for coming tonight. Uh, I had the opportunity to go to Elton Middle School and meet Mrs., uh, Emily Holloway and see, um, just all the wonderful things that she's doing there. What impressed me the most, though, is Ms. Holloway is driving a school bus at the end of her day and, um, was able to go with her up in Hensley Holler, up in Beldor Holler, and up in Sandy Bottom, who's been up there lately. Okay, let the record show that there's no one here that's, that been up in there. And it was a beautiful, beautiful, uh, time, seeing the spring up in the mountains and, uh, being able to talk with some parents that I met up in, uh, Sandy Bottom was, was pretty cool, too. So I'm just really impressed that Ms. Holloway is, um, that we're, we're lacking, uh, bus drivers right now in the school division, and she has stepped up because she has her CDLs and she's driving a bus for her school. And, uh, just kudos to Ms. Holloway for all that she's done, uh, done and all that she's doing. I, um, also had a chance to go by, um, Montevideo Middle School and, um, visit Ms. Davis's E L L classroom. And she is doing a incredible job in, uh, the E L class there. And I'm, I'm just so proud of what she's doing. I'm proud of our E L, uh, population and our program that we have here in Rockingham County. And by being on the board, I hope that I have the ability to help, uh, these, uh, students out that are in our E L L program for whatever they may need, uh, to make their educational experience the best that we can give them here in Rockingham County. So, Ms. Davis, thank you so much for, uh, all that you do for our E L students. And, um, for the students that were there that day, it was really cool to get a chance to meet you, uh, as well. So, I, um, also wanna bring up tonight that, uh, Cherith Bradshaw, she's in here tonight with her father. And I wanna congratulate her tonight for coming in second place, uh, at the state VHL State Debate for Tournament and Student Congress. So if you could give her a hand tonight. Congratulations, Cherith, of, uh, of this great accomplishment, and I'm, I'm rooting for you going on, so, uh, good job.
Thank you. Dr. McQuilkin.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I'd like to start off this evening by thanking the administration for, for, from East Rockingham High School for hosting us here this evening. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Barbara. We appreciate the fact that you put forth great effort to have everybody welcome. Thank you so much. I also would like to say that Rockingham Educational Foundation had a very successful golf tournament on Saturday, uh, April the 16th. We're so glad that the Riffy Foundation, the Riffy Group supports our schools in, in many ways. And we are appreciative for all the people who participate in events like the golf tournament, which continues to support the foundation, which supports our schools. And lastly, uh, we have two more middle school musicals coming up in May. Or actually, Montevideo Middle School will be hosting their musical, "The Lion King," this week of, and concluding on Sunday, um, May the 1st. And followed by, in two weeks, we'll have the, the, uh, middle school, Elton Middle School with their production. So I encourage everybody to, to take some time and attend these musicals. Thank you, Mr. Breeden.
Thank you. Ms. Lauer.
Thank you. Uh, and also thank you to, uh, the, the hospitality here at East Rock High School. Um, it's so great to be back in the schools, and it's also great to see some of our students. Uh, those of you who are here for government tonight, can I get a big hand raise? Awesome. Welcome. And now let's see the students who are here for fun. There you go. Look at you. Yay. Thank you all for coming. Let's give them a round of applause, for sure. Thank you all for coming tonight. Um, it is great to be back in the schools. I was able to, as, uh, Mr. Falk said, able to go to, um, uh, Mass Nutt and Technical Center and have a tour. And yes, it is 50 years old. Um, and it's, it, it was, uh, Mass Nutt and Technical Center was opened the same year I was born. So a building this old really needs a lot of work. So we, we really need to, to spend some time looking into what we can do to help that building and, you know, all the 50-year-olds in the house. Um, also, uh, I was able to go to Plains Elementary School for another Farm-to-School Day. So much fun. It's always great to see the, what we do at a Farm-to-School Day. The, the teenagers bring animals from the FFA, the FFA students bring animals and tractors and plants and all sorts of farm-type things, and then teach the elementary students about farming. And it, the, the leadership opportunities given to the stu- to the older students and the educational opportunities given to the younger students, it just, it does my heart so much good. So I really enjoyed that at Plains Elementary, and I've got one, another one coming up at Lacy Spring. And I think there's a couple other around the county. Um, and if they would like somebody to come see it, let me know. But, um, so those are the wonderful things happening. I think also, help me out, I think our greenhouses are opening soon, and I believe our greenhouse here will be selling plants this weekend. So if you need some plants, come on out. Um, there's lots of great things going on at our schools, and that, everybody should take the opportunity to see what they can enjoy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Scheikle.
Uh, thanks to Mark and Brandy, Barbara, and also to Carrie Wilburne, who's been spending significant time here at East Rock, uh, for making it, you know, a great building and for hosting us tonight. Um, in terms of events that are coming up, as Ms. Lauer said, Lacy Spring Farm-to-School Day, um, is later this week. It's on Friday. And then next week will be an amazing event out at the farm, uh, in Broadway. So there's the Ag Production Field Day for the farm that, um, our students run through the Ag Production Program at MTC. Um, congratulations also to all the students that are currently, uh, in Atlanta at the International Career Development Conference, uh, with DECA. So there are a number of students down there competing and attending the conference. Uh, we also have an event coming up for which students at Spotswood, the One Act Play students, are raising funds. So they've been, um, invited to a national, uh, performance. And this Wednesday, the 27th, uh, from 5:30, um, I believe until, um, 9:00, it's a Family Fun Day. And that's at Spotswood High School, for anyone who's interested. And there'll be a number of, um, things that are going to be raffled off. And then there's also, um, a chance to throw some pies at some people and, uh, raise money that way. And I'll be one of the targets, so, uh, you're welcome to come. And, uh, again, help raise funds for the One Act, uh, play group from Spotswood.
Thank you. One of, one of the students, I don't remember which one, on the way in said, "Do you think we'll be here four hours?" And I said, "I can promise you, no, we won't be here four hours." I have to say that, after a pretty tough day at work, I had a 2005 Nissan Maxima that did not wanna cooperate with anything I wanted to do with it today. And I was rather frustrated and thinking, doggone it, I got a school board meeting to go to. But I just wanna say to those people who were recognized during the recognition and presentations that you have, you have rejuvenated me, you have charged my batteries. And I am just so thankful that I came tonight to, to be witness to the things that you all have offered and continue to offer. It is always great to be at East Rockingham High School, the school that they told me when I went on the board would never exist. school that they told me when I went on the board would never exist. And if, if you're ever back in Hensley Holler and that area again, and you want to stop in and have coffee with folks, most of them's related to me. I get back there most of the time, quite often. So, be happy to sit down and introduce you to some of those folks. But thank you again to everybody for coming, and we will sign agendas as quickly as we can for you before we go into, into closed meeting. So, now we will move to action items. We do have need to approve the minutes, and I will entertain a motion for approval of those minutes if it be your desire.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye for approval of the minutes. Aye? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Field trips, Dr. Scheichel.
I have two field trips for your approval tonight. They are both to the FFA State Convention at June 27th through the 30th, 2022. Thirty students from Broadway High School and 15 students from Wilbra's Pence Middle School to Blacksburg, Virginia. And I recommend approval of those two field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion in support? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of supporting the superintendent's recommendation, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That as well is unanimous. Special Education Annual Plan. Scott Hand. Good to see you again, sir.
Thank you, school board members and Dr. Scheichel. In case you haven't heard, this is my last presentation of the annual plan. I'm a pretty excited fellow. I presented a month ago to the school board with a proposal for information. I've also presented to the Special Education Advisory Committee on two occasions, and I have received approval from the advisory committee. And tonight, I am here to seek your approval for the annual plan for 2223. As you are aware, it is primarily an application for funding for salaries. That's really about 100% of the document. You have a copy of the summary. You've had a copy of the summary. I did make a correction after last meetings, a little note. That was sent out the very next day. So, you hopefully do have a final copy. Are there any questions? I have 48 days.
I do recommend approval of the annual special education plan for 2223 as presented.
Since Mr. Hand, you were such help to me as we were dealing with my oldest son's issues going through school. It has been an honor, and it's my honor to move to accept this final plan that you present.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm going to ditto that and second that. My oldest son as well. So, thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That's five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
CTE Perkins Local Plan. Mr. Fitzgerald, who helped me with the bugs in my trees.
We sure can. We can help a lot of things, I think. But you know, I got to tell you before I even start out on this, I was really worried following Scott Hand because a lot of times the special ed reports go for a very long time. And he told me tonight it was only going to be short, and it's like, yeah, right. But he did. That was a good last one. Yeah. So, Mr. Breeden, school board members and Dr. Scheichel, last, if you remember, at the last meeting, I presented to you our locals' Perkins Plan for your review. And the Perkins Plan funds about 50% of our equipment and other expenses for CTE programs. And tonight, I asked for your approval of that plan, and we'll be glad to entertain any questions you might have on that plan.
Thank you.
I do recommend approval of the CTE Local Plan for RCPS for the 2223 school year as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the Perkins Plan as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McQuilkin, who I heard, I just want to clarify that I didn't have Mr. Fitzgerald out trimming trees or something. I sent him pictures of a tree that I had and said, "What's killing this tree?" And...
I said, "I don't know."
But you got to hold to somebody who did.
Did, I did.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question about, this is the executive summary?
Yes, we have.
At 14 pages? How long's the not-executive summary?
So, tonight, after, if you approve this, Ms. Bocock has the full plan for your signature, and it's probably about three times that many. A lot of it is based on assurances that we provide. You have a summary of all those assurances, but it just goes into a little more detail about what you're doing there.
Thank you to all, you and all of your staff for pulling this together. I know that money goes to very good use within our school system. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That is five oh. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, Mr. Breeden, if I can say a word or two. I was going to say this before, but I thought then you might think I was trying to bribe your vote or something. But I do want to, I do have something I want to say. You know, I've worked in this county for 38 years, and in that time, I've been an ag teacher. I've been a CTE administrator at Maston Tech Center, and now I work with CTE as a director. But in that time, in those 37 years, I have traveled a lot. And I've been to a lot of school divisions, a lot of schools, in a lot of different capacities. And I've got to tell you, when we go to other schools, Rockingham County is held in very high esteem, even by some of the big boys like Fairfax and Arlington and some of those, because of what you guys do. And I want you to know that, I mean, you have, over the years, and there's been different folks on and off the board, but you have, as a board, shown unmatched support for career and technical education programs. And that does not go unnoticed. I personally thank you all for that. Dr. Scheichel, your support, since you have been in the superintendency, has been unmatched. I've never seen a superintendent that supported career and technical education as much as you do. And I sincerely, from my heart, appreciate that. You guys always are, are very up on our programs. You are always willing to try new things, even if they might seem a little bit unique. You're always willing to do that. I think the farm, the MTC farm that we use, we call it the county farm, is a good example of that. And because of those things that you guys support, we have a lot of initiatives and a lot of really cool challenges for our students, that they get some experiences they would not have if otherwise. So, I certainly appreciate everything that the board does. I know you work endless hours to make sure our students have opportunities. But again, I want you to know, you've created something, I think, that is not matched anywhere in the state that I can figure. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Student Accident Insurance. Dr. Scheichel.
So, this is an annual approval of the student accident insurance that we provide. This is voluntary for students, and it's not really something the school division pays for. We simply select a vendor that has a good program. Ms. Mast, our chief financial officer, she contacts various vendors and then looks at their proposals. So, three vendors were contacted to provide information. Those three are K&amp;K Insurance, The Young Group, and HSR. And after a review, Ms. Mast recommends the voluntary student accident insurance be awarded to K&amp;K Insurance for the 2223 school year. I concur with her recommendation, and I do recommend approval of K&amp;K Insurance for the 2223 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I hear a motion in support of the recommendation?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation and, and submit K&amp;K Insurance as the insurance carrier for the students.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion?
Is K&amp;K who we used this past year?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That is five oh. Under information items, the RCPS Community Dialogue Framework.
It's my pleasure to introduce Catherine Barnes from the Center for Justice and Peace Building at EMU to provide an update to the board regarding the Community Dialogue Framework. Back in January, we had a presentation at Elton Middle School where Dr. Barnes outlined the approach that we have taken. We have now, you know, expanded the group of people who are discussing, you know, controversial topics, all kinds of topics around what it means to create a safe and caring environment for all our students. And it's been an amazing process. And again, the end goal really is that this becomes a public process. So, where members of the public can have a framework and a process for having these conversations. These aren't easy conversations. It's an incredibly diverse group, really representing many of the facets of Rockingham County. And so, I will turn it over to Dr. Barnes to provide that update to the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel, and, and thank you all. Thank you very much for your interest. And I would especially like to thank a group of people who are over here who've worked so hard in making this community dialogue happen. And I'll, I'll say a few more things to you in a minute. So, yes, as Dr. Scheichel mentioned, we first introduced you to this Community Dialogue Framework back in January. Let me see if I can figure out if this, yes, okay. So, the objective was to really find a framework for being able to support truly dialogue, deep conversations around many of the challenging issues that are being faced by Rockingham County, its education system, in a way that could then bring in some of that complexity and then be able to share those ideas back with the board, but also to, to really find ways of modeling how to have respectful, solutions-oriented dialogue among our diverse community moving forward. So, the topic that was chosen for the first in this Community Dialogue Framework was to look into how best to create a safe and caring environment for all Rockingham County public school students in ways that are both consistent with the law, while also considering the diverse values and perspectives of the Rockingham County community. And so, with that as the, as the kind of presenting question that we're exploring, you can imagine how complex it is. So, the question was, how are we going to do that? So, with the assistance and really the, the, the development of a, of a small advisory group, which was introduced in January, and we have Joe Shoker and Renee Reed and Katie LaPera, who are here tonight, and there's, there's some others as well, we thought together about how we could make this happen. And so, central to that was, we thought is, we could begin by having a core group of people who really reflect the diversity of the county. Diversity in terms of all sorts of different occupations, diversity in terms of living in different parts of the county and having kids that are connected to different parts of the, different schools in this county, people who have different identities, and also people who have very different perspectives, values, and beliefs that they are bringing to the issues that we were coming together to talk about. And together, we've been engaged in trying to map out what does it mean to create a safe and caring environment in which all students feel that they can belong. So, since March, we've had three sessions of this group, and I'll talk in a couple minutes about the kinds of issues that we've been exploring. But we've realized that having found a lot of both common ground, we've also identified some issues that we feel that need further exploration. Originally, we were thinking that this way of framing up some issues that we might open up to a public community dialogue event as soon as May, we thought that actually it would probably be better to, especially with summer coming up, to have a few more sessions and then look really towards the first part of the next school year as being the time when we open up for the, for the whole public to come in. The results of these conversations, we hope will be some interesting insights, some ideas of where common ground is, also some insights of different perspectives that our people are bringing, that we would then plan to share with you as a school board members, because of course, it is you who are charged with making decisions and developing policy and programs for the school. So, we're still planning on doing that in the latter part of 2022, and hope you will find it interesting. In the meanwhile, we've really been, I think in many ways, pleased to find that there's a lot of common ground. And in some ways, I'm not going to read out all of these issues, but we've found that there's lots of places where people just can really connect because many of these issues are just human issues. There are concerns for things, for example, how to create the supports for creating positive mental health and well-being in the schools, how to address things that can be a healthy school culture, how do we have policies that address vulnerabilities, but also policies and practices that make sure that there's healthy relations and boundaries in parent and school relationships. So, many things that have come up. We also realize that perhaps we share what the outcomes would be, but maybe have some different senses of how to get to those. And that's kind of one of the places that we're getting to now. We've recognized that there are a number of issues that are in need of further dialogue and deliberation. And once again, I won't read these all out, but they're complex and they're diverse, and they're things that we're going to be working on. And then over these next couple of months of really thinking through them together, and then hoping to complement this with some research into some ways, some strategies for addressing it, so that we'll be able to have that mapped out and then invite the broader public into exploring it together jointly. And so, what I'd really like to say is, some of the folks over here, and I don't know if you, if you want to stand, I'd love to invite you to. If you don't feel up for it, that's fine, too. But they have given so much of themselves, and these conversations have been both really exciting and sometimes really hard, right? Maybe not as hard as the kinds of work that Will St. John has been doing, or that some of the kids who are providing the, the support with the community cause of it. But you all have really stayed with the conversation and really shared of yourselves. You have, have not, you know, stepped back and just gone into just like contentious debate mode, but really shared of, of your stories and your lives and your beliefs and why you care about what it is that you care about. And I think through that, a lot of respect has begun to emerge and a lot of understanding and a lot of willingness to stick with it. So, what are some of the things that the core dialogue groups are mentioning? They're recognizing a need that we have to have the difficult conversations in a thoughtful and respectful way. They're recognizing that in some ways, this core dialogue group is a model, setting the example for how such respectful conversation can happen throughout the community, even when we disagree. Another person said, "We each need to take public ownership of the message going forward." And the message is that we all came in with our own belief systems and are passionate about that, but we've been able to find common ground. Another observed that this group was not handpicked to benefit one side or another, that we need transparency that will create trust, particularly with those who might have a growing mistrust of government in general in the current climate. And this is a reciprocal group. We're not talking at folks, rather, we're starting a conversation face to face. I know I've found it to be an incredibly hopeful, if challenging, experience. And I really look forward to seeing where we'll go, and we're looking forward to inviting everybody into the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to personally thank Dr. Barnes and the members of the core group. Again, these are conversations around topics that we read about all the time. For me, it's been a fascinating process to really be there to listen. I think at the last session, I'm not sure that I said a single word, right? I was over in the corner, just paying attention to what people... Oh, that's right. Because my soccer team was playing at the same time, so I told them they won. That's about the only thing I shared. But it's, it's been a really amazing process. Again, a group that reflects the community so well and where really difficult conversations can be had, and where people still leave respecting each other and agreeing to continue to talk. And so, thank you to this group and to Dr. Barnes for really allowing me to participate in that way and to learn, you know, from the community. And I can't wait for the fall when we really do this in a, in a broader forum. when we really do this in a broader forum where the general public is invited and we can have these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. With that, we will move to school board questions. I will begin with Mr. Cross.
All right. It's always nice to start off first on the school board. I've been a new member on the school board, and every time, being the first one to speak, but I'm up to the task. I was hoping tonight to get through this meeting and say thank you for coming and going on, but today, as I found out, and by the chairman Breeden, that we were, as a board, looking to change our approach on board members being allowed to bring forth motions at school board meetings. This is something that we have always historically done here in Rockingham County, and just now that I'm on the board now, things are changing. So, tonight is really, when we heard that at the very, very beginning of this meeting tonight, that's a part of this board trying to censor what I bring to the table, and I'm reflecting my constituents in District 3. And I don't appreciate that, because this is the way the board has always worked, and now we are beginning to change the way that Robert's Rule of Order is being, is being done. And so, I would ask that the board would reconsider changing this and allowing us to continue down the path that we've been going down, because now that an action item has to be approved before a meeting handcuffs us as a school board members to be able to take matters such as, back in February, when Ms. Lorr, when she stepped up and she brought forth a motion to ask that the mask be taken, make it be optional for the, for our students in the musical plays. And so, if that was the case, and it was, it was parent complaints and parent asking, hey, athletes have an option to wear a mask or not wear a mask, and our students in the musical should have that optional, option as well. And so, she brought forth a motion at that meeting, and we were able to change, to make it optional for students in musical plays coming up that following week to be able to wear a mask or not wear a mask. And so, I think the process works. And just a couple of things that, to say is the fact that before I came on the board, there was no votes that came forth in a year and a half in COVID mitigation strategies. A year and a half, this board did not vote, and what they did is they relinquished their power over to the superintendent to make those COVID mitigation strategies, and they just approved it. And as a community, that's not what you wanted. That's not what you voted for, and that's not as a whole, as a community that you're looking for in a school board to do. You want the school board members that you elect to make these decisions, yes, with guidance by those who are around us and taking in all these, all the, all counts of opinions, but it's up to us at the final, at the final, at the end of the day. And so, I gave, the very first meeting that I was at, or in January, was, was actually the second meeting, is when we took the vote finally to take a vote to take the mask off our students inside the schools. Only two of us up here chose to do that. And then, the following, the following school board meetings, I came forth with motions asking that masks be optional for kids who have ADHD, for kids who have any type of disorders or hearing disorders, or any, one of the motions was to say that if a licensed doctor saw that it wasn't practicable, because that was the word we were fighting over in terms of law, we, I said, if a licensed doctor finds that the student is not practicable for them to wear a mask, then it would be that parent's decision whether they wear a mask to school or not. It was voted down. And so, these are all examples of a school board member being able to bring forth motions and not have to, and listen, you can FOIA my emails. I've sent forth emails to all the school board members asking them to put these things on the agenda. At times, they've, the chairman has said no to me, and other times, he's ignored me. And so, what this is happening is, is this is just limiting, censoring my ability as a school board member to reflect my constituents and bring forth motions to vote to, at the least, show you where we all stand on issues at times. And so, I would ask the board that they would reconsider and continue doing what this school board has done for decades and not change the policy now because Matt Cross has come on the school board. And to end with that, the, the example that Chairman Breeden brought up, and this is not being disrespectful in any way, but he brought up a case that's in the courts right now in Spotsylvania County. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman Breeden? That case has nothing to do with action items. That case has to do with the school boards going into closed session and not recording to the public, saying, this is why we're going into closed session, and they fired their superintendent in the school division. And so, this, this is a completely different case when it comes to a school board member asking for a motion for an action item, whether it be approved or disapproved. What we've always done is, we followed, a school board member can make a motion at a, at a school board meeting. So, with that being said, I'm asking that you would reconsider as a board not to change the way we've done things for decades.
Is that all?
If you want to ask me questions.
Well, no, I just, I just certainly don't want, I certainly don't want it to be said that I censored you.
No, sir. At the last meeting, I had one more thing to talk about, and you didn't allow me to speak to that issue, but I'm not mad and I'm not upset. I would just like to be respected as a, as a school board member up here when I have something to say. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Lorr?
I have a question about the, is it kindness closet, the clothes closet? How, how do we make donate? I've got a storage building that needs some cleaning out. How do I, how do we make donations?
If you just let me know or let Mr. Kaufman or Stabler know, we'll set up that.
Awesome, thank you. And I do want to note that Broadway also has one, but they are full, because I had other storage buildings that need to be cleaned out. But hopefully, TA and Spotswood can get some pointers. Thank you very much.
Do you guys have one too? Does TA have one too? Awesome! TA has one, so Spotswood? Does Spotswood have one? Yay! Let's have a big hand for all the kindness closets in the county. Thank you.
Dr. McWilken?
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I pass. Pass.
Mr. Falk? Dr. Scheichel?
I will say, as to the care closet, it's an amazing project, you know, at East Rock, they've taken that really on to, to be more expansive maybe than in some of our other schools, but our schools do have them. We also have them at our middle schools. But again, there's always, of course, that, you know, connection to the community to get funding for the items and also donations. And so, I will also say that we're working with, who at this point will remain anonymous with a potential donor to provide additional funding and supplies to our care closet. So, that project will likely expand at all our schools over the next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Those students who need agendas signed. What's that? Yeah, here in just a second. Feel free to come up as we break before we enter into closed meeting. Everyone, please be safe driving home, and thank you for all of your differing opinions. We do have reason to...
Wait, wait, there's one more thing. Hold on. Not now, but in a minute.
We do have reason to enter into closed meeting, and I will entertain a motion in that regard.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees, for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, and or resignation, and to A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lors. There a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McWilken. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That is five oh. We will take about a five, 10-minute break, and then we will go into closed meeting. Now, we can do those.